Commissioner Patterson, we'd like to please you, please.
Everyone, please stand. This is Bobby. Yes, the gracious heavenly Father, we just come to you at this time, thanking you for your blessings of life that you've given all of us, Lord, and allowing us to come to you in this place. Lord, we ask for your blessings on this meeting, that we may be the commissioners that we need to be, that we want to seek your wisdom out above all things because your wisdom is supreme. And thank you, Lord, for our citizens that are here tonight, each and every one, Lord. Be with them, bless them, Lord. And we ask that we can just be pleasing in everything we say and do. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Mr. Patterson, do you want me to play it for you?
I play the city of life of the United States of America, to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, number two, unfinished business. We have the approval of the minutes of the May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, regular scheduled board meeting. Commissioner Cersei, any airdrop missions in those minutes?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, Commissioner Patterson?
I have none, sir. I would like to...
All right, no regrets. So I'll make a motion to approve those minutes and ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, number three, unfinished business. We have the board discussion action. We have Public Works Director Zach Ratcliffe with the warning of the bid of the fiscal year twenty twenty four, element of resourcing old title seventy six.
Okay, with a lot of studying on this thing and adjusting and getting everything together before we could match and apples to apples kind of thing, we're going to go with Johnson, Pavin. And we done a selection criteria, it's like a grading system, and that's how we come up with that one. And I guess you guys got the page there in front of you. It's got the number of the criteria that we did.
It's written down, Zach?
It is. You got it there.
Oh, okay, got it.
Second page of that, you'll see that criteria. That's a lot of money that we're going to be spending there on that, and I'd like to be sure that it's done correctly.
It looks like a good system.
It is a very good system.
Does that have the OT in there by the skin of your eye?
I don't know about the OT, but...
The Board of Education, this group is quite bad.
Okay, that looks good.
That keeps us in what's going on, thanks.
I was close, but it took far more than that.
And that's a local thing, too, so that's great.
Yeah.
All right, gentlemen, any discussion on this?
I have none.
Just one word, Stoller.
Yes, sir, we should be ready to get rolling here probably in July, if that suits you guys. Obviously, I'll coordinate with Zach to make sure we're in there at the right time. And, yeah, obviously, with stuff that's going on, the fourth and stuff, since we're working on seventy six, I certainly think we should be able to get started in July. You know, with all the work being on one road, we should certainly be able to complete it pretty quickly with minimal impact for everybody.
Thank you. Y'all have the old flaggers?
Yes, sir, we employ a separate flagging company that's all certified to do it. That way, it keeps us by safe, it keeps us by legal, so.
Good.
Can you... Johnson, Spader?
Okay. All right, like Ben said, I'll ask for a motion to award the bid to Johnson, Pavin.
I'll make a motion?
I'll ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
How much?
Two million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so brings us to new business. We have the board discussion action. Fannie County Tax Commissioner Rita Newton regarding the resolution of delinquent taxes. Miss Newton is here, I think she's actually on vacation, so...
Is she on vacation?
Gentlemen, y'all are better with me, I'll read this. So this was a letter she had sent to us, each one of us, that says, "Lately, I've had a few delinquent tax situations that I and my tax service company are not comfortable with selling on the courthouse steps for various extra detailed issues such as inheritance, breach of covenant, or breach of..." Should we con- convince them?
Probably, like they have a tax assessor's covenant, so that when it comes out of there, you got a huge penalty.
Okay, breach of covenants, it says con- convince on that one.
She missed.
I don't think we have to give those to this county, sir.
Breach of covenant, large tracks that would be considered excessive levy and unclear land boundaries, I need to use Superior Court for these cases. These sales are called judicial interim tax foreclosures. For me to be able to move forward with this type of tax sale, I first need a resolution from the board. I've included the resolution for your consideration. And the resolution reads like this. Whereas OCGA forty-eight dash four dash seventy-six eight provides that governmental entities may proceed with judicial interim foreclosures for delinquent taxes upon enactment of a resolution authorizing the use of the same. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Fannie County desires to allow the Tax Commissioner of Fannie County to conduct judicial interim tax foreclosures in accordance with Article five, Chapter four of Title forty-eight of the Official Code of Georgia. Therefore, it is resolved that the duly elected Tax Commissioner for Fannie County shall have the authority and discretion to commence judicial interim tax foreclosures in accordance with Article five, Chapter four, Title forty-eight of the Official Code of Georgia annotated. Any discussion on this, gentlemen?
It's a pretty clear bet.
Mr. Cersei?
What make... Sam, what kind of cases would these be?
Yeah, our property value is just, we have nice property value. And by comparison, sometimes what's owed is significant, but over to the overall value, so you got a lot of money left, or you've got an estate. And you say you're entitled to it, and you say you're entitled to it, and you say you're entitled to it. What this does is allow the tax sale to go forward as normal, but then the Superior Court says, you get X dollars, you get X dollars, you get X dollars.
Okay. Does it say over there, or just...
It basically didn't tell me if you want to know the specifics, if you don't want to, okay?
No, 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 I just didn't know.
Yeah, she'll be glad to provide that.
Okay.
It happens more frequently than we do, doesn't it?
Okay.
And sometimes, oh, like, this is not in Fannie County, but I'm involved in one that's in Polk County within this state. And one sister says she's entitled to X dollars, and one sister says she's entitled to X dollars. And there's five or six credit card companies, and they're saying that they're equal, they're percentage of the pie. And it's just more that your average tax commissioner wants to be the party responsible for, say, you get X dollars, you get X dollars. You've got a...
And apply it over to a Superior Court judge.
So if you get a Superior Court judge, if you, as an interested party, don't like it, you got remedy, appeal it. But it gives your tax commissioner protection, therefore gives your county protection that they get it right, or that there's somebody's... Everybody gets opportunity to come in and say, there's a record of what you said and what I said.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else, gentlemen?
No, sir.
I have none.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the resolution as written, as typed, and ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, number five. We have our board discussion action on Fannie County Recreation Director Eddie O'Neill regarding the purchase in some equipment.
I'd like to purchase a piece of equipment for the pool up at the City Park. The pools went well, I know everybody's been excited. It's been a packed house, and we're excited that the community is really using it. But I'd like to purchase a twenty twenty-one. Basically, it's a Kusman golf cart hauler. It's got a bed on it, so we can haul the chemicals and trash and whatever those maintenance guys need for the pool. So it's a twenty twenty-one Kusman hauler from J and T Cart Sales. The price is seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. Then that would come out of my splosh.
I have your spot?
Yes.
Gentlemen, any discussion on this?
No, sir.
No.
All right, and said I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of seventy-two ninety-five for a twenty twenty-one golf cart for the maintenance guys. We paid out a splosh, so I'll make that motion, ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And one other thing, the second part with that part was to, I'd like to get started on the walking path. We agreed to, I reached out to Zach. It's his busy time of the year, but we're close to ready. I would like to do that. Would come out of my splosh for not to exceed ninety thousand, and for Johnson's pavement to do the work, and we can get started on that.
When do you get started on that?
Just as soon as we can get on there. I think Justin's going, but we talked about end of July, first of August.
That's about, what, one point one?
Yeah, it's a mile, give or take. We've already got the drawings done, we've done a master plan back in twenty twenty-two, so I do have a layout of that, and he's able to lay it over into his GPS system without having to pay surveyors and architectural drawings. It will save us a bunch of time and money, so. And that, too, would come out of my splosh.
We've talked about that being a portion of it in the plan, so.
Yes.
Now, we're still got, we just left there a couple more things, and that thing's completed.
Yeah, yeah, we'll work on the playground areas after this one, so I would like to go ahead and get the walking path portion completed.
Can you tell, or tell the commission board just how good that weekend, this past weekend, was?
Yeah, it, what happened this weekend, obviously, it was a beautiful weekend, and we were also, we had rented the fields at Tomboy Park in the city for a World Series baseball tournament. And what happened was, the public was obviously attending, and then as teams finished, it was just, you know, just slammed. Everybody left the fields, came to the pool. So it was a busy weekend, a good weekend money-wise. So, and most of those folks were, you know, happy to have something to do while they were here doing that also, so.
That's good.
It worked out great. And that will happen again in a couple of weeks. We'll host a softball World Series.
But you're, but through the week, those...
Yes, yes. And super proud of my staff, they've trained well, they've done great. The lifeguards have been outstanding. They've actually went in and saved a few folks, so we're happy with the way that's going, so it's been really positive for the communities.
Thank you.
That's all, that's right. Y'all be in love.
Well, I would like to say something about Eddie, about him. I would like to brag on him, he's actually coming in. I don't have the numbers with me, I meant to bring them with me and totally forgot them, but he's actually coming under budget on the whole project, so, with everything that's completed, so. We, budgeted two point six out of the general fund, and he's coming under that, so.
I don't mean to get the rest of it, okay?
Yeah.
While I'm here, it's not...
No, fans are dry.
Thank you.
Great job, great job, appreciate it.
We do speak to.
Okay.
Any discussion on that guy?
I have none.
All right, so I'll make the motion to approve not to exceed ninety thousand dollars to be paid out of splosh for the walking trail of the City Park. I'll make that motion, ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Eddie.
Thank you. And that, along the road, where did those funds come from, for Zach's projects?
They were given.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the L, yeah, that's...
All right, number six, we have a board discussion action. We have Fannie County Sheriff Dean Irvin regarding the purchase of equipment.
I ran off and didn't make y'all copies of this thing here, but I'll give it to you when I finish telling you about it. Y'all look at it and make copies, or whatever you want to do. I can get it back from you tomorrow if I need to, Sheriff. I'm here to request the purchase of a, it's an electronic thermal drug identification type device that we got turned over to by a drug unit up in North Carolina not long ago. And for those of y'all that don't know, you know, you have to field test drugs in the field, so you'll know how to charge them. And up until now, the way you did that is with a little field test type kit. It's got two little glass capsules in it that have liquid in them, and it's in a little plastic container thing. You have to take part of whatever the drug is and put in there with it, and then pop those little glass capsules in there and shove it all up and see if it turns the right color. That's what we've done for years and years. They call them field test kits.
I've been watching cops on TV.
Yeah. Here's what's happened, they have...
Updike.
Well, no, they haven't. They found out that there's errors in them and they're not working. And there's always been some room for error when it comes to reading those things, depending on the, you know, how, you have to look at the color of the liquid, and then you got a chart over here, and you have to see how dark it is to determine if it's positive or negative. And there's just a lot of room for error in them. And down around Atlanta, they've already, they're already not able to use them anymore because the courts are just not taking them. And I think the combination with just the natural room for error, along with the fact that their quality control may be diminishing in that area, too, has just led to kind of a failure of being able to rely on those things for good test results. But anyway, there's a way around it. There's a thermal device out there, and I don't really know how to explain to you how this thing works other than it uses light and, I don't know what all of it. Anyway, you don't even have to take the drugs out of the bag that they're in. You just shoot it out through the bag. Keeps your officers from having, it keeps you from having the risk of getting airborne and things like that, getting it on your hands and stuff. And the accuracy is just pretty good for it. It keeps you from having to wonder if you've got a positive test result or not. But it's kind of the, not necessarily the thing of the future, but the thing of the modern times for us to be able to perform our drug field test with. It's a thirty, there's two different ones. The one we're looking at is the lower level that we still have to send what we test to GBI and have an official test done on it. But this gets us to where we can at least make charges and take orders, just like the old field test did in the past. It's a thirty-one thousand dollar item. And I'll let y'all look at the, what all comes with it, the warranty and the software and all that. It's called a Trudark device. And I apologize for not making copies. That's just one of the many things I forgot to do today.
Danny, it seems to me like, and I would, when I read that earlier, that you brought something to our attention of that nature last year.
We've been kind of working on trying to purchase this thing for quite a while. The way we tried to do it initially, the way I'm asking to do it tonight is out of ARPA funds. But we initially tried to do that out of the drug settlement funds. And we've got opinions from everybody, all the way across the spectrum, about whether or not that's an allowable expense, and nobody can give us an answer. They're just now getting them to start to spend some of these settlement funds, and it's pretty specific about what you can spend that money on. But drug treatment, drug prevention, and things like that are all included. And as far as I'm concerned, that's drug prevention, so I've said yes.
Yeah.
But...
But you're not for sure that ARPA will handle it?
No, ARPA will handle it. ARPA will handle it. We're not so sure that the drug settlement funds would have handled it. See, we've got money sitting there that we could use for that, but nobody will tell us that it's okay, and we don't want to get our hands slapped. So we're kind of erring on the side of caution.
Is this a machine or something?
It is, Johnny, it's a little old box thing. I've only seen one of them one time, but our drug guys swear by it. They say that they are really the thing.
So you still bring the drugs to the jail, but you test there?
You can, or you take it out in the field. I mean, it goes, it's got a little old case and everything. The North Carolina boys bring theirs down here all the time for us to use. You take it with you or bring it to you, however you'll do it.
Portable.
Very portable, yeah. But that's about...
That'll come out of ARPA?
Gentlemen, any discussion on this?
What's the life of the date, date, date?
It's got a life, what does it say about, it's got a two-year warranty on something, then it's got a lifetime of maybe of updates and things like that, is that what it is?
See, law units not available. Twenty-four seven, table support.
That's good.
Access Trudark D-Learning Corps, free basic software updates, more narcotics, library are provided for a life.
So they come down here?
Yeah, for the life.
So they come down here and they'll train, they'll also show you a training period?
I don't know if they come, or if you do it online, it'll be one of the other.
Johnny, it's, sorry, it's probably like your iPhone.
Yeah.
It's going to be there until the next better technology comes out. But it's just spend it all.
Okay.
Yeah, the way they get you with that stuff is they keep changing. And they don't support the other way, though. So you gotta go with the new way. Yeah. But that figure was thirty-one thousand, what, four hundred and fifty-two?
Yeah, there. Okay. For those taking notes. All right, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Back to y'all.
Appreciate it.
Any discussion on this, gentlemen?
No, I'm good with all of them. I'll be sure to...
Something we need.
I'll shoot that, should help them, help them officers.
All right, that being said, I'll ask for a motion to purchase.
I'll do that, I'm sorry to interrupt you. One other question, Sheriff. That thing tests different drugs, right?
Everything.
Okay.
Every, every single compound that's been identified.
All right, thank you.
All right, that being said, I'll ask for a motion to purchase this equipment, thirty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-two out of ARPA funds. I'll ask for that motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
When are they going to handle it, Sheriff? Can they get that to you pretty quick?
I'm assuming they can, because this guy that we reached out to to give us this quote back when we were trying to use the settlement money, when we got the quote from him, it seemed like he was calling Dustin Carter about every three days once we know when we was going to buy this thing. And that's been going on for six months. So I'm assuming that...
He'll probably pass out when you call him.
He probably will, so he reached out just a few days ago, so he knows what we're doing here tonight, but I'm assuming pretty quick.
Call him tonight, tell him we'll see you tomorrow.
Yeah.
All right. Number seven, we have a board discussion action. We have Fannie County Fire Chief Larry Thomas regarding the fireworks grant.
Fireworks grant?
Fireworks grant.
Not those kind of fireworks.
I don't know if I...
We're not turning you loose with fireworks. I mean, that's open, I guess, not what's in the grant. We're not turning you loose with any fireworks, we don't...
They couldn't put a grill out the other day.
I'm sorry, Larry, I wasn't supposed to tell them.
But anyway, a little bit about the fireworks grant. Last year, we didn't get awarded, but the year before that, we got awarded. And I think it's got a little bit of a way that it's being handled, when it's being filled out. This comes from the state, state fireworks. This is some of the monies that they get in from these fireworks stands that they have across Georgia. But as far as the work that Michael Cornington, I did talk to him to come in with us tonight. I want to thank him for the work that he done on it. There was a lot of time that went into it. There's a lot of organization that went into it. But we're hitting it just like we did here before last, and it's helping us out a great deal. Our target audience for this money will be the new recruit class coming on. And we're going to have one, when does that start, Michael?
July.
July.
If anybody wants to sign up, right?
Yes. But anyway, twenty-five thousand is as much as you can usually get. But what we done, what Michael done, since he sat down, and he done an inventory on some of the stuff that we would need. And as you can see, we've got a lot of these Kevlar boots, rubber boots and so forth, hoods, structural fire helmets, and it goes on. But the bottom line for the quote was twenty-three thousand, three dollars and thirty-five cents. The grant, actually, that was deposited was twenty thousand, five hundred and thirty-one. So the remainder of that will be our portion, which should run around two thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-five cents.
Say that number again.
Two thousand, four seventy-two, thirty-five.
Okay, thank you.
But that's a very good deal to get that number.
Where you going to get that?
This here's coming from M E S.
No, where you going to get that two thousand, four hundred and seventy-two?
That's what I'm here for.
That is a size. I just wanted to know.
Is that something like a takeout of your post sign of it?
It don't make, it don't pay that, I wish it did. But, okay. And this right here is for your, like, the new people that's coming in?
Yes, sir.
For your next class.
That's great.
Okay, so how many you know, how many you know is coming in?
Well, the last time, we had somewhere around twenty, didn't we, Michael?
Right now, there's eleven past VAT, and there's nineteen more to test next Saturday. Right, still be early.
Oh, that's awesome.
You?
It is awesome, great.
By any time, Mike, by any time, you can get twenty-three thousand dollars worth of stuff for twenty-four hundred bucks.
Yeah, you got it there.
Yeah, essentially. Can you say that should come out of the...
Actually, I got a general fund.
You don't want to...
Any discussion on that?
Hello?
Commissioner?
I understand.
Any discussion being?
Uh, Chairman, when I say technical general fund, the balance will be the two thousand, four hundred and seventy-one.
So that's what we approved, twenty-four seventy-two.
Out of the general fund, and the other comes out of the monthly.
Got you. All right, that being said, I'll make a motion to approve twenty-four seventy-two, thirty-five out of general fund and then twenty thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars out of the monthly grant fund. I'll make that motion, ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor? All right. Gentlemen, I do appreciate it. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you for all the work you did.
Would like to say thank you to Michael again for doing such a good job.
Yes, sir.
That's right. If you don't know him, Michael, that's, he's our training chief of the fire department. So we're fortunate to have him for sure. Thank you. Play him later. He does, he does a great job for sure. All right. Number eight, we have board discussion action. We have a MOU for operation of the mountain area transit system between Fannie County Board of Commissioners and North Georgia Community Action. I think this is basically, this is our MOU with Matt, correct? And this, this comes due annually, correct? Somebody want me to read this novel to you?
No.
No.
Sure. I'm on the road.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay. You guys have had this run, you have a chance to look at it.
Yeah, I have, I have number three if you want to read some of the match.
So it's almost like a favor number three, right?
Yeah, I have number three.
Where says for every contact with the county?
The county. It's on the agreement, um, item three.
Local match, local and cap, capital match.
Do you have that?
Probably.
Second page.
Okay, let's do this. Anyway, um, so it's a local match, capital match, local operating match for this agreement beginning July first, twenty twenty-three. That was, I guess, the last one. Should that be, no, that's, that was showing what that was.
So it happens?
Um, operating match for this agreement beginning July first, twenty twenty-three is expected to be?
The twenty twenty-four.
I think it would be two.
Yeah, it's happening.
Two hundred sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. In total, we're about twenty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-two cents a month. This amount reflects the fifty percent of local match requirements set forth by the Georgia Department of Transportation for the fifty-three eleven transit program. NGCA Incorporated will be, will bill the county monthly for the local match requirement set forth in item two point three and three point two on that. Capital match requirement for this agreement beginning in July, July first, twenty twenty-four is expected to be zero and replace the ten percent local match requirements. Let me make sure of that.
That's only, it's just don't gee-haw. So in other words, on this other page where it's five thirty-five, eight fourteen ninety-four, we're paying half that and keep max. That helps the max program.
Right.
And that's all responsibility.
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool. I understand that. And I've, and the, and this is just like, update that contract, just to.
Yeah, definitely. We're new.
Yeah.
So my thoughts would be if we do vote on this, is we vote on this, if it's approved, then make sure that that is correct before we.
Thirty percent correct.
Change, okay? And, and the dates.
Okay.
So, um, gentlemen, if there's no discussion on this, I'll make a motion that we approve the MOU pending, that the dates are right and the amounts are correct and, and that, those sections.
That land rate's over.
Yep. I'll make that motion, ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Ah.
I'll be used to it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, God, yeah.
All right, so number nine, we have a board discussion action. This is a work detail agreement by and between the Georgia Department of Corrections and Fannie County. Again.
That's for our detainees?
That's for our detainees.
Yes. Yes.
In fact, you want to elaborate on that at all?
Yeah, we've got a group of detainees from Caldwell Judicial Center. Uh, they come down here each day. They're, they're down here four days a week, just like our schedule is. They, they work the hours we work. They normally have about eight, seven to eight on the, on the detail, plus an officer. And you gotta, you know, you gotta figure what's, what's costing there from, for the county. But we couldn't, we couldn't hire eight people for that, for that number by no means. So it's a great deal. We do a lot of, they, they do a lot of work. That we need most of our signs, from just about all of our signs, they pick up litter and other, other, you know, do the other jobs. So it's, it would be greatly missed if we didn't have them.
And we get them how?
Uh, each day.
Each day?
Yes, sir.
Five days a week?
Four days a week.
Four days.
Like our schedule, they sit there on four days also. Yeah.
That, that picks up a lot of time.
Yeah. It kind of, the kind of deal is, but we're, you guys have signed, if you sign this contract, it's not like you pay that every, that, that's flat amount every, every month, every year. They, they're a bunch of time clock, just like we are. If they're out, we don't pay. It's, 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 that's just what it works.
What is our cost right, man?
Forty-nine thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars.
Yeah.
That's cheap.
Yeah, it's about like, you know.
And they, uh, they do it through, uh, throughout the year, isn't it?
All year long.
All year long.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
And they don't, the state runs.
No, sir, they, no, sir, they stay on county maintained roads.
County roads.
Yes, sir. They do. I think it actually specifies in the contract that it has to be on county maintained roads.
Yeah.
Do you want me to discuss something on this?
No, I'm glad we got it.
Yeah. It's great service, Fannie County.
It is. I think this is, uh, it's definitely been a bit for the, for the citizens.
Well, that's good.
If we can ever find another one, maybe we can look at it too.
Exactly. I'll keep a, I'll keep a hand on it, but I'm not giving up.
All right. With that being said, gentlemen, I'll make a motion to approve the work detail for the, for the upcoming year, forty-nine thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Ah.
All right.
Thanks, Gus.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, that brings us down to number ten. Board discussion action. This is Highway fifty-three Bear and Mine Application. This is down toward McHale. And we've been kind of talking back and forth with the sheriff's office today in regard to this. We'll do whatever we want to, but this will be my recommendation on this.
Where is this?
This is down there for a summer. Uh, it's a little.
Little restaurant?
Right, right in front of, they just opened. But there were, uh, there were some discrepancies on, on the application. I think there, they got most of it, but there's some discrepancy on the, on the application. And I think we need to address those before we proceed them up. Like I say, we've been talking back and forth with sheriff's office. They brought some things to our attention that we, we actually brought a couple things to there. So they're gonna do a little bit more checking on it as well before we approve this, before they approve it because sheriff has to sign off on it as well. So he just didn't feel comfortable signing it today on that. So it would be, uh.
Most tight.
My recommendation to table that.
Okay.
How good is that?
All right. So I'll make a motion to table, uh, number ten to tell our next regular meeting.
Or until those things are.
Yeah.
So it's.
I'll make that motion, ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Ah.
All right. All right, that brings us to the public commentary. Anybody got anything, you want to come up, say anything? Not everybody all at once. All right. We'll close the public commentary. Gentlemen, that brings us to the executive section. Do you have any executive section?
What? I'm thinking. Oh, wow. No, I'm good.
All right. That said, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I might get motion, I'll second that motion.
All in favor?